Welcome to the December 14th meeting of Phillips Town Planning Board. And I note, if my voice takes off for the south before the end of the meeting, I'll do some sign language. Roll call, please.
Anthony Maranti?
Here.
Kim Connor?
Here.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
David Harvey? Peter Lewis?
Here.
Neil Toman?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman?
Here.
Minutes, approval of minutes on November 16th. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Kim? Nobody? Move to adopt the November 16th meeting. Minutes? Second?
All sort of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is return of escrow for Matthew and Linda McMahon for the Garrison Close the business September 22nd, 2017. Please release us the funds remaining in our escrow account. We have two payments in the account, first for $5,000 and a second for $52,000, $58,000. Do we have any information, Tara, on that? Well, depending on, once we check in that there are no outstanding bills, I'll adopt, ask for a motion to return escrow.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One little item that's not on the agenda, got some information today on the Isler project. The, it's felt that there's a need to provide substantial information back to the board, nine sets of drawings and so on and so forth, so, and they did not provide any information within the deadline for this meeting, so, I guess we're gonna just table that, huh, Ron?
Yeah, I think they were providing information from this board, but they were looking for full copies of the entire board members.
Okay.
We'll get that arranged.
Okay. So, if they get that done, then it'll be on the January meeting agenda.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
I guess order, I, there's a device out here, it looks like some sort of typing, recording device, I'm not familiar with what that is meant to be for our purposes. Can you just, maybe this was last month when I was out?
Yes, it's a course.
An autographer that, on behalf of Highlands, Hudson Highlands, to record the planning board minutes. As to that discussion, thank you.
New business, Surprise Lake Camp. Applicant seeking amended site plan approval for various site improvements and so forth. We got a memorandum from Ron today. Detailed technical report. Ron, would you like to comment?
Again, you have, it's a new project before you. Tonight's the initial submittal from the applicant or initial presentation. I think initially you can turn it over to the applicant and make, let him make a presentation on the scope of their proposal. You do have a technical memorandum from my office, it's got a variety of issues to deal with. Some are procedural in terms of defining it as a major project, which it's so classified under the zoning regulations. There's other administrative or technical things to resolve. The most significant one, I think, after this presentation is to determine whether the board wishes to conduct a site visit to understand the specifics of the proposal before you. But if you can, you could turn it over to the applicant's engineer.
Mr. Gainer?
Good evening. For your record, my name is Rich Williams. I'm with Inside Engineering, and I also have Brad Solmson, who is the executive director of Surprise Lake Camp. Surprise Lake Camp owns 465 acres in the northwest corner of town. It is off of Lake Surprise Road. I brought with me this evening, I brought with me this evening an aerial map showing the overall property. If any of you have been up there, it borders the Hudson Highlands State Park. You enter the property from the eastern side, there's a driveway of Lake Surprise Road comes up from Foundry Pond Road. There's a long driveway that accesses the camp, which sits on the eastern border and western border of Lake Surprise. The majority of our site improvements are gonna be just that, there's site improvements. We're not proposing any expansion of use, there's no building construction proposed. Our application is really about improving site circulation, separating existing parking areas from where the campers congregate, and to show you what I'm talking about, as you move towards the center of camp, in and around their main administration building, food hall, dining hall, there's currently an area where all visitors, all deliveries, everybody congregates in parks all day long. It also happens to be the main walking path for campers to get into the main administration building. What we are proposing is a series of site improvements, the first being widening an access road that leads to the rear of the administration building and creating a circular turnaround. This will allow us to reroute all deliveries to the rear of the building where the loading docks are. It'll also allow us, on drop-off and pickup days, to recirculate bus traffic to the rear. That will allow us to, again, free up a lot of the traffic that now enters the front of the building. We're also proposing a secondary parking lot for visitors. This parking lot would be separate from the main entrance to the building, and again, that is about redirecting visitor parking away from where the campers congregate. And that's then gonna allow us to create a pedestrian-oriented space in front of the main building. Once we create that space, you know, and create a pedestrian-centric space, which has a beautiful view of the lake, we're also gonna take that opportunity to remove a lot of invasive species that have grown along the slope, stabilize some erosion by paving some of the existing road network, add stormwater management in and around the lake, one because we're over an acre of disturbance and required to understate DEC regulations, but also two because the camp itself has undertaken an initiative to preserve the lake, which is very important to them and their operation. That's the application in a nutshell, I can go into more detail, or I guess we're really here tonight to ask you to perform a site walk where we can review the application with you in the field.
Peter? Anyone? Ron, any comments?
As I said, in the memorandum, the applicant's made a presentation in terms of trying to identify the scope. We've tried to summarize it in written form in the memo, so you have some better understanding of it. There's a variety of overlay districts that impact the project that are identified, and I guess one question I have before we go much further is, there's understanding that there's a conservation easement on a portion of or much of the property? Could you provide some information to enlighten us on that? Who holds the easement?
He believes Hudson Highlands State Park, which would be the state. The state, the state holds, and what Mr. Gainer is referring to is, and a copy is going to be provided to you, we've recently uncovered it, our legal team has reviewed it. There is an easement over the property because we do adjoin the Hudson Highlands State Park, and an easement was previously granted to them, and I'll let Bradley talk a little bit more.
Yeah, our understanding of the easement was that we not subdivide the property or do any building, and the nature of this project is to focus on the lake and the traffic, so we're not concerned, and our attorneys aren't concerned, but, A, we're not subdividing, and B, we're not doing any building, and the easement's focus is on both of those issues.
That's fine, I just need to see it, so the board can understand it.
So, our, we'll get to you this week.
Sure. It'd be good to have that prior to any scheduling of a site walk.
Yeah, so the, that and the deed are forthcoming.
I guess we can go ahead and schedule a site visit, and we need more information before we schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, I think you wanna conduct a site visit to just better get the site specifics of what they propose. Tonight's meeting can also formally declare it as a, or classified as a major project to establish the review procedures, which will mandate a public hearing.
Okay. Tara, you have a date for?
The earliest we can do it because of the holidays would be January 7th.
That's, anybody have any preference for either day?
Choices are what again?
7th or the 14th?
The 14th.
The 7th I am available, the 14th I am not.
I'm good for the 7th.
Okay. Peter?
7th.
Okay. January 7th. Okay. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, declare this a major? Ron?
Right, yeah.
Major project, motion to that effect, please?
Motion to declare it a major project.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that should be stated is that, since they're also working in proximity of the lake, a permit will be required from the town conservation board as well. They're aware of this project, as the board is, so.
Okay.
I've kept them informed as we've met with the applicant and moved this to this point in the process.
Are there other notifications should be sent out? I've got North Highlands Fire Department, but...
The only one I raise here would be to North Highlands Fire, just to make sure that they're aware of the project and understand the improvements they're doing to facilitate improved access.
Okay.
And then, depending on what the conservation easement indicates, it might be fair to file notice with them, just so they're aware that these improvements are proposed, so they can weigh in if they wish to.
And the board should know that camp is in touch on a regular basis with the fire department as well, so.
Yeah, I kind of assumed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, would the board be inclined before the site walk, i.e. tonight, to take any action relative to seeker as far as declaring your intent, or would that come after the site walk?
I think after the site walk.
I mean, since there's another, I'd like to...
Sorry.
And since there's another involved agency, I think it'd be best, you declared an unlisted action, do a coordinated review, it means Tara will have to send out the notice to, I think that the CV is the only other involved agency, so it'll just be them, and then you wanna make your 239M referral to the county as well.
Okay.
But there's no reason you can't, you can't do that now, I wouldn't wait.
To that effect, excuse me, we're gonna lose it. Cleared unlisted and coordinated review?
I'll make that motion.
And you said 299 to the county, Steve?
A 239M.
A 239, sorry.
So, I'll move that we make it an unlisted action and a coordinated review, and we send a 239 referral to the county.
Second?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Did we say 9:30 on the 7th?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a, do you have, is it hard, I've never been up to Lake Surprise Camp, did we just go up Lake Surprise Road to the end?
Yeah, we'll be up there and we'll meet you, but you just drive down the road and, and...
You'll find it.
Yeah.
The first thing you'll come to is a gatehouse, you'll drive straight through the gatehouse, and then you will find, you'll see a large swimming pool on your right, go past the swimming pool, and there's the admin building.
We'll be there.
Don't go too far, you'll be in the way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Old business item number three is Christopher Buck, but we got a note from Ron. There's a referral need to New York State Office of, break down this abbreviation, Ron, the Historic Preservation, and we need documentation.
Right, I'm working through the applicant's architect to obtain information that we can then file.
Okay, so we don't have that now, so we really can't...
That'll move forward pretty quickly.
Yeah. So, since we don't have that, we're just gonna table this issue until January, assuming we get the information in. Motion to that effect? To table this buck until January?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, Robert Miller, Altech Service Center, 1380 Route 9 Garrison. Somebody here? No, doesn't look like it. Should we go ahead with it anyway, Ron?
Yeah, were there any comments that came out of your site walk from last week? I was not in attendance, so. Any questions or issues we wanna raise with the applicant that they should respond to before your next meeting?
Well, one is pointed out in your report, that I brought up, is about redoing paving and would be an increase in impervious surfaces. I don't know if anybody else had anything else? Dennis?
Well, on the paving, on their drawing, they show areas, very limited areas of paving, and when we were doing the site visit, they were talking about redoing the paving and adding paving where they're going to have the cars for sale, but that wasn't indicated on the plan, so I told them that they really need to show that as part of the submittal.
All right, I'll make sure that they're made aware of those comments, that they will be responding to you.
Let me, yeah, let me add to that, just to be clear, I think the big issue with the property is, one of the big issues is tied to the earlier, many years ago now, ROAD Act situation we had, which is the collection of liquid and materials that are outside of a vehicle.
Yeah.
And ROAD Act was responding, and it's not just oil, it's...
Antifreeze.
Antifreeze, all ki, I don't know how many different kinds of chemicals cars have, but the reality is that place they wanna put the cars, a mix of for sale and for repair, is on a slope with no catching mechanisms for preventing that. And the last time we looked at this, after ROAD Act, was at the property just north of 403 and 9, where we had a long discussion about whether there being a creek nearby. Now, this is not next to a creek, but it's not that far away from wetlands, whether they be formal or informal ones, and so a thoughtful expression of how they are going to capture those materials. The conversation as we walked around, I think, you know, was more social than it was detailed at that point, and so I think they have to really think about what are the appropriate means by which we can prevent that situation.
Also, what I can do, move those issues along is, from what I've just heard, I'll try to circulate internally just what I perceive to be the questions you're raising, for you to weigh in on, and then once I hear back from everyone, I'll actually release it formally to the applicant for him to respond. At least there's a paper trail at that point.
Also, Ron, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we were submitting a referral to the Putnam County Planning Board for itself of that project?
Yeah.
I don't know if we heard anything back, I haven't seen anything.
No, nothing's come back.
Okay.
But the referral's been in.
Okay. Peter? I see in the notes here, this did come up when we were standing, we're standing here talking about the SWIP plan, 'cause it is sloped, and it slopes down to Route 9, so. Site plan specifies the amount of existing and proposed impervious coverage, as well as overall site disturbance to confirm SWIP, so they need to make sure that we, SWIP is clearly laid out on this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's, need to set this up as a, can we go ahead, since we did a site visit, determine the public hearing?
Yeah, if you wish to, you can schedule that for January.
Anyone have any reasons not to? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to establish a public hearing for Miller Altech in January?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number five, boy, Hudson Highlands Reserve, continue review, including a full environmental assessment and revised preliminary drawings.
Good evening, Glennon Watson from Beadie and Watson with Rick O'Rourke from Keenan Bean, and Steve Gross from Hudson Highlands Environmental Consulting, and Jonathan Vega from Fractal Group, the project sponsors team. You should have all received a substantial additions and corrections and changes to the EAF. We went through a significant rewrite based on AKRF's report to you, the, a letter that came sort of at the last minute from Hudson Highlands Land Trust, another letter that came sort of at the last minute from the, from the Conservation Board, all of which have been wrapped into the text of this revised document, and we're hoping that you'll have some input from your consultants, and we can move this along. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Other than that, I don't, don't have much to add unless there are questions.
Ron, is Graham here?
The, there you go. The materials were provided about a week ago, it provided very little opportunity to get through everything, but we did have enough time. I've been in contact with Graham, and Graham will present his findings of their satisfaction of the questions that he had more recently raised in prior memorandum.
Can you get a mic over?
I apologize for being late, I hit some traffic on the way up. I have received the revised material that Mr. Watson referred to, and my staff and I have reviewed that. We reviewed it against our previous letters, which were the letters we sent in July, I believe it was. From the planning side, from the EAF side, we believe that everything that we had asked for has been addressed, with the exception of one item, which is, I think, a minor item that they can easily prepare, which are site sections. We had asked to demonstrate from the nine vantage points on the scenic road overlays, visibility into the site. What the applicant has provided were a series of nine photographs showing the existing conditions from those locations, which are fine, they do demonstrate that there is a substantial amount of vegetation in the immediate foreground of the view, but what I think would really help to demonstrate to the board and the satisfaction, especially with respect to scenic overlay, is the distance and change in elevation that would occur from those vantage points to the proposed development. Similar sections were provided in the materials submitted in October, only from Route 9, not from the scenic roads. So, I think those would be quickly and easily accomplished and folded in, but all the other matters, they addressed. I note that one of the items that was of significant concern to the board with respect to water quality, with respect to erosion control, were the potential presence of horse trails in the open space areas, and in this revised material, the applicant has withdrawn that suggestion due to the concerns, and will not be providing the horse trails in the open space. So, from that perspective, we can determine that the potential impact has been avoided, the impact to erosion and sediment control, the impact to potential water quality. I also had my staff review the revisions to the traffic analysis, and spoke to my traffic engineer today, and he is fine with the proposed revisions. He did note that it appears that the site driveway leading up from Route 9 might be at a grade slightly higher than what might be allowed, but that would be something that we'd handle as part of the approval, so those...
If I may interrupt, that the road up from Route 9 is the subject of an application for alternate road standards, which are available in the town code.
Okay, thank you for that correction. So, those two minor points that we note were really not material. I think that it would be useful tonight to discuss your remaining concerns, the board's remaining concerns, with respect to the SEACRA determination of significance. That is the next step in the process, it is a step that we should be considering taking very soon. I don't think we're ready to do that tonight, because you haven't advised Ron and me and Mr. Gabbett to prepare a resolution for you, that would be something that would have to be done in writing. And as I think we've discussed in the past, there are two options here. You either issue a negative declaration, which basically says that there is no potential significant, significant adverse impacts, or you issue a, and that would, that would end the SEACRA process, or you would issue a positive declaration, which indicates that an environmental impact statement must be prepared. In my review of the substantial amount of material that the applicant's presented, both in the EAF and the conservation analysis, I believe that there is a substantial amount of evidence and material in those documents to support a negative declaration, if that is the decision that your board makes. However, I understand that there are a number of very significant issues that you have raised, and others have raised in this discussion. It would be odd to have an environmental impact statement done on what is essentially a 25-lot subdivision with an equestrian center, but the SEACRA regulations are flexible enough that you would be supporting in that decision as well, in my opinion.
Comments on the board?
So, I have, just to write this minute, a procedural question, which is, I noticed in your memo that you mentioned that, or, I don't know if it was a memo, but anyway, you mentioned that Part II shouldn't be altered by the applicant, and that's what we got this week, is alterations to Part II and...
And I believe what happened was that the version that was submitted in October had been changed, or incorrect version was submitted, so what they submitted just last week was correct and represents the Part II that this board adopted. It's this board's responsibility to prepare that Part II, and we did that in July and August, so that, that has been corrected.
Yeah, I mentioned that last month, that was a clerical error, including in the earlier one.
I understand, but I just, I wanted to make sure that it was still our document that had been submitted.
The right one was substituted.
You know, because we didn't, one of the things, because we didn't have the right one last month, we didn't get to talk about anything that was in there.
In the Part II?
In the Part II, that was, you know, in terms of, you know, I went through the ones that we received, and, you know, I had questions, but tonight, it's a new, I know it's something we talked about in July, but it's still, it's a new physical document to me, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the one that it's supposed to be.
Yes.
Okay.
And that really set the outline for what was the Part III or the expanded information?
Anybody else? Anybody else on the board, comments? Neil? Neil? Dennis? How does the board feel about making declaration? Ron?
Okay, so one thing for the board to recall is, your typical, your typical procedure would involve not making a secret declaration until a public hearing has been, has been held. So, if the board's otherwise disposed to consider finally taking a secret declaration, I would suggest that you might wish to schedule a public hearing for January, and then direct us at tonight's meeting or subsequently to prepare a declaration for your consideration for that January meeting.
If I may just comment on that, if I'm not mistaken, Ron, I think you said it's typical to have a public hearing before determination of significance?
Typical of this board.
Oh, okay, 'cause it's not, that's not the common practice or procedure under SEACRA, but...
Right, understood, but that's how this board is typically processed. Right, understood, but that's how this board has typically processed all applications before.
We have, we have submittals from several other organizations. Conservation Board and the, excuse me, Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and an attorney that was, Joel Russell submitted the comments. And I want to, Graham, you want to address these?
Sorry.
Certainly. So I believe you're referring, there were several letters that I believe were in your agenda packet, the November 30th letter from the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and the December 11th letter from Joel Russell, who I see is here tonight. I did read these, and the points that Mr. Russell are, is bringing up, I think, address a lot of process and intent. And I know that I was not here with you. My colleague Susan Janchow was here with you in late 2014, early 2015, I believe it was, when the application was first filed and the board began its discussion and looked at the conservation analysis. So without having been here, I cannot speak directly to my knowledge of that. I would have to trust in your own memories and the record that the board has created. I can say that I have read the conservation analysis, a binder which is comparable in size to this, and I think that was done quite well. I understand there's some concern about how the conservation findings were adopted and whether they truly are the position of this board, and I would have to trust in your memories and again, the record. I went back and I read the conservation analysis, and it seems to clearly indicate that the board finds, the board finds. So there must have been some discussion, I would, I would assume, that led you to, to make those decisions. So there was nothing in the record that I read on the conservation analysis findings that would cause me to question your process at that point. But I do say that I qualified because I wasn't here. I beg forgiveness if I said anything wrong in that respect. So I don't think that it's, it's necessary to go back to that. Certainly, the SECRAT process, once it's complete, allows you then to focus on some of the issues that may still be remaining. And while we might dismiss those as just the details, there are significant details. And I think that this board, in its review of any plan, has to make sure it complies with the zoning and it complies with all of the intent of the zoning in a conservation subdivision, the protection of open space, and the location of the lots, et cetera. To my knowledge, that's not a discussion you've had recently. I think you've been focused more on the environmental assessment. We did have a little bit of back and forth at certain times about the yield count and how that was done. And I believe Ron prepared a memo in August, which addressed that, responding to some of the applicant's analysis. So all of that, again, is, is in the record. I don't, I didn't see that there was a reason for you to go back into the conservation analysis findings to question that, unless, of course, you had concerns. Some of those concerns could be addressed as you then review the site plan, which would be your next, which would be the approval that you would give ultimately, should you go that path, once you get beyond the determination of significance. You can't make that approval until you have the determination of significance and the conclusion of SECRAT.
Can I ask you a question about the open space discussion that was in those letters? So is it, is it your understanding that having, I guess, paddocks in what is designated as open space is acceptable? Because they, the document says that the buildings related to the horses would no longer be in an area that was considered to be open space. But the paddock is sort of on one side, the building is here, and then the open space is on the other side. So I'm interested in what you would have to say about that.
That is a, it is a tricky question, right? What constitutes open space? Can a building or a structure be located within an open space? Can a use be located within open space? And I think that part of the problem is our definitions, our interpretations of what constitutes open space vary considerably. Some people consider agricultural use as an open space use, and there would be barns and other structures, whether they're a question or equestrian or others, that could be in that open space. Certainly agricultural properties contribute to a community's open space character. Whether it's truly designated open space is another matter altogether. You know, I think the intent, if I can try to interpret the intent of the code, was to try to preserve open space in multiple forms, whether it be forested, open meadow, water, wetland, whatever it might constitute on that property. And I think that the conservation analysis process that you went through in identifying primary conservation areas and the secondary conservation areas or the high-value conservation areas and the low-value conservation areas, would be that process to identify which elements, physical elements, natural elements of that property contribute to the open space or deserving of protection. My understanding of conservation subdivision design is that it is a fluid process. Generally, water bodies and wetlands are considered primary conservation because of their ecological value, their hydrological value. Large, unfragmented forested areas could be considered primary conservation areas. But so too could open meadows, if they contribute to the ecological habitat or if they contribute to the, the open space character of use. So the whole question of what is truly the open space and what deserves to be protected is, is, is very flexible and fluid in the conservation analysis. So to have a structure, getting back to your point directly, I think, to have a structure or a use within an open space, and I'll use air quotes to kind of set that aside, to me is, is not a problem, so long as you find, the board, that the overall layout of the property achieves that objective of the protection of the open space and the protection of the community character, which has that open space feeling. So in my experience working in communities here in Putnam and in other areas in Duchess, you know, the, the inclusion of a building, the inclusion of paddocks or other uses of cleared land as part of an open space is still consistent with an open space, a broader open space character. So I don't see it as a, as a direct problem. I believe, if I read correctly, that the applicant has said that those areas would not be included in the calculations of the required lands, so that they are preserving lands that are undisturbed as, as open space, and not taking credit for the paddocks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, have you fellows, are you, and your people, receive, excuse me, received the letter from Joel Russell?
Yes.
And I don't suppose you've had a chance to respond to, could we get a response from you in January?
Yes, sure.
And Graham, I know you gave a generic, a general statement about it. Could we get a response from you to Mr. Russell?
Yes, certainly.
And then, Joel, wherever you are, in January, we hold off and you respond to that. You want to detail your, what contents, I'm sorry, the contents of your letter to us? And should we do that now or wait till January, get all these comments?
What are you thinking of doing?
We're, get all the comments from each of the individual parties for the January meeting, responding to Mr. Russell's letter.
Oh, responding to it?
Yes.
That'd be fun.
Yeah.
Andy, would you, would you entertain a summary of the letter from Joel?
If you wish.
Yeah, but I don't know why we need a summary.
Brief?
Brief.
Yeah.
Let me, just, just let me make one more point, Kim, with regard to Part II and Part III. Each of the, each of the comments that you found needed to be discussed is actually repeated in Part III at the beginning of the particular discussion. So you don't have to flip back and forth. And the other thing that we added is we added the guidance from the DEC's website at the beginning of each section, so you, so, so you get an idea of what, how they're driving it, what they're driving at.
And that was particularly helpful. That was one of my comments. Thanks. That was one of my comments in July, or, I'm sorry, November. I'm mixing up dates. I don't even know what date it is today. In November, that the, there was inconsistency in that. So they've taken a very, they've taken apart that, that Part III and really built it and have a consistent format. So that should really help you understand, as you get to each subject, what are the issues we should be looking for here? And how should we measure this application against that standard, if you will? The DEC doesn't have firm standards, but it provides good guidance.
Okay, Joel. Brief, please.
I realize you have the letter, but you don't have a signed copy of it, so. Thank you for the opportunity to come here today. I'll be brief. And you have the letter, so I'm not going to go over everything in the letter. I just want to make a few comments and perhaps clarify some things that may have been misinterpreted from the letter. Also, I was listening to this discussion that you were just having about agricultural uses in, in open space, and it seems to me pretty clear that the, the way it's written, agricultural structures are allowed within the preserved open space. It's right in there. So I, so I don't think, I don't think you have to do a lot of gymnastics to justify that. As long as it's consistent with conservation values, you can do that. But I'm not really here to try to stop the project or slow it down. I'm really here to talk about what was the goal of the conservation subdivision process and what have, what can we learn from what's evolved through this process? And I haven't been as close to it as you have. I know everybody here has worked really hard. I really respect it. I know the developers worked very hard, the planning boards worked hard, the consultants have worked hard, and you've gone a long way in working on this. But I think that there was, there's a lesson to be understood from the way it is sort of, the way it evolved from the beginning. And that is the role of the conservation analysis process. And that, the idea that you do a plan first and then you go back and do a conservation analysis to see if it works is backwards. And that's kind of how SECRAT works. People do plans and then they do the SECRAT analysis. And often, what you get is a lot of documentation and not necessarily significant changes in the project. The idea of the conservation analysis is that you look at the site first, before any roads are laid out, before any house sites are picked out, before any of that. You look at what are the resources, what are you trying to protect on that property? Because the justification for some of the density incentives in conservation subdivision is that you're getting some really extra special land conservation out of it. And if you're just preserving, say, a very steep mountainside, which may have an important forest, but you probably couldn't build much on it anyway, that's not a big significant conservation gain. If you're taking something that is otherwise developable and protecting it for ecological, scenic, or various other reasons, that's a real conservation gain. And it struck me, looking at the plan, and I've seen it from the beginning, from the 2014 one right up to today, that envisioned in the plan from the beginning was houses encircling the pond. And I would suggest that if the site were looked at first for how do we protect the most important valuable environmental resources on the site, you might not have done that. And the planning board should have been running the show on that. And I, I think one of the problems was that you did a very thorough conservation analysis and conservation findings, which the planning board approved. But the actual, the most important part of the conservation findings is the map that says what the high and lower value and developable lands are supposed to be. That, as I understand it, that map was submitted by the applicant and was essentially approved by the planning board. I don't know if you discussed it and looked at the issues, if, if you had looked at the site before a plan had been developed, if you might have seen it differently. My experience with other boards and other situations of this type is that when you do that first, you come up with a different approach. And you put the, you put the development in the least environmentally harmful areas, which I know is what claimed is happening here. But I have to say that seeing those houses around the pond, it's, it's hard to understand. I understand you can mitigate, you can put buffers and that sort of thing, but it's not built into the plan from the beginning. And I'm not saying, I mean, ideally, you might go back, but I'm not suggesting you do that now. You know, the horse has been out of the barn for three years, so you're not going to get it back. But the next time you have one, you have a plan like this, a conservation subdivision plan and review, I think it's really important to observe that key thing that's in the code, which is start with the conservation analysis, have it run by the planning board, have the conservation findings and the map that go with them as part of it. Make sure the planning board is really comfortable with that. And don't even entertain a development plan until you've done that. And don't, and don't, you know, if the developer comes with a plan and then send him back and say, well, now do a conservation analysis for it, you know, that's not really, that's not really the true intent of the code. I mean, I'm sure every developer sees a piece of land, has ideas about it, and could probably draw something. But before you entertain something as a board, if it's under the conservation subdivision provision, I really would encourage you to look much more closely at the outset, at the conservation interests in the property, and not just accept somebody else's opinion about what they are. So I think I'll, I've taken enough time, I won't take anymore. But thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Hey, Joel.
So this, this project came to us first as a plan, like, the first time we saw it. So what, if, if we were going to follow the guide that you've just given us, how would we stop that? Where would that, where in our process, since you know what our process is? Because you wrote the code.
Well, the first time you saw the, yeah, good question. So the first time you see the plan, you say, where's the conservation analysis? They haven't done it. Okay, so just say the plan is not acceptable, it's not, your application isn't complete. We won't accept this submission. Go back, do a conservation analysis, and let's go through that entire process before you give us a development plan.
So this plan came to us and didn't become something that people were interested in turning into a conservation subdivision until after, until afterward, until after the first submission. No? Didn't we, we got, before you were involved, Glenn, we got a doc, we got a drawing, and it was under another name, but it was the same land. And then the land grew. I mean, I'm just trying, that's how I remember the process.
If I may, I think it's very, very important to think about, and I've known Mr. Russell for years. The issue is this. The intention cannot override the clear provisions of the code. What was followed was the code. Of course, a plan was submitted. Your code requires that a sketch plan be submitted as part of a conservation analysis, conservation subdivision. That's precisely what was done. And so the issue now, three years later, after all of the work that's been done with your council, us looking at it, your engineers, your planners, to say that you didn't do it properly, quite frankly, flies in the face of what your code is. And I think the important thing here is this, and there's legions of case law about this. The intentions of a drafter cannot override the clear provisions of the ordinance. Property owner has to be on notice, has to know what the procedures are. They were followed. If there, if there are infirmities or shortcomings as to what was done here, forgive me with all due respect, it's not that you did anything wrong. It's when it was drafted, if somebody wants to come back and redraft it three years later, we should not be held hostage for that.
No, I'm just trying to remember what we, you know, how, I just, what I want to, what I'm asking, Joel, you know, I'm, I'm interested in our code and in the future and how we're supposed to, you know, this, this proceeding, this is something that's auxiliary to this proceeding, right? So what I'm saying is, you know, let's say we have an applicant and they have a piece of land and they want to put, you know, five houses on it, and then they find out they can't put five houses on it with the way that, with the, under a regular subdivision. So then they look at their alternatives. But they've already sort of come to us because they've kind of started. So at what point, I'm just trying to understand, like, at what point we could turn them around and say, oh, no, if you want a conservation subdivision, you have to start all over again? Do you know what I mean?
Well, I think that there's, there's, there's a, there's a whole...
So that we don't find ourselves in a position in the future where things are unclear?
If I may just respond to that, I think, if, if I may.
Sure.
I think the important point of this... I think the important point of this is that when, there are different stages and phases through the approval process. Obviously, there's a preliminary threshold assessment that occurs and is codified by SECRE, the Part One and the Part Two. The Part Two is your document, the Part Three is the response to what has been identified as, as certain impacts. Mr. Russell, and as I pointed out in the letter regarding the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, they never even looked at the Part Three. And so the prejudice and a predisposition to require, to say that the board should have a positive deck and prepare, and there should be a DEIS, I mean, that's like, I've been, I've been a judge for 25 years, you hear half the evidence, and then you're supposed to make a decision? Of course not. The legislature chose a process and a procedure to follow. We followed it, you followed it, and to now say, well, I'm sorry.
I think, I think you're misunderstanding me because I think I'm not expressing myself very clearly. When someone has an application, when someone wants to have an application, they come to a pre-app meeting. And what I'm kind of asking is, like, is there a function where in the pre-app meeting, we can, we direct people so that we don't end up in confusion?
And first of all, I'm not suggesting that you should follow the drafter rather than the code. I think the code is pretty clear on it, and if it's not clear enough, then perhaps it should be amended to make it clearer. But Kim, to answer your question, yes, it's at that, you pinpointed where it is. It's at the pre-app meeting, when you may or may not have a sketch. You know, I think sometimes applicants think they can't come to a pre-app meeting until they have a sketch, but actually, they should be encouraged to come before they have that sketch, because they should come in and find out, well, what can we do? And if they want to present a sketch, they can present a sketch. But your job, it seems to me, and it's pretty, to me, it's pretty clear in the text, is that your job at that point is to say, okay, we see, you have, you want to do something with this land, before you go any further, before you spend any money on planning and engineering and all the rest of it, of the, of the project. You go back and take a really close look at the land and its resources and its conservation values, you bring in the conservation board, you bring in other folks in town, you bring in the land trust, others who would be knowledgeable and interested in that. And you do that first. And, you know, there's no law against putting plan on paper, but the idea is that you don't undertake a serious review of it until you've done that first. Now, you know, having done three years of serious review, it's a little hard to go back, and I'm not necessarily saying you should. But it's really looking ahead to what, what would be the best way to go forward. And I think your question was, was really asked, was trying to get at that, Kim. So, did that answer you?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I mean, it's just, you know, I'm interested in making sure that our process works, you know, and, and to not end up with people spending a huge amount of money if they don't have to. So if we have, so if somebody else comes to us in three years and has a very large piece of land that they want to do something with, it might be useful to us to remember, you know, that that might be an option that we might, because what can happen is somebody might change their mind along the way and then end up in a place where they think, oh, actually, maybe this should be a conservation thing. And I just wanted, for us to be able to think about how to, you know, help people get to that place rather than do some work and then, you know.
Well, I think it's, it's good to encourage them to do that if they don't know what they want to do. That's still a good place to start because it'll serve them well, whatever they end up deciding to do. If they don't do a conservation subdivision, they'll still have a lot of really good information, it'll help them with SECRE, it'll, it'll be a very good starting point. So, you know, getting, getting that happening as early as possible, and to your point about saving the applicant money, I think that's a, that's an important point. Before you spend a lot of money doing detailed planning and engineering, make sure that you're, you're developing the right part of the property is what it comes down to.
This has been a very long process. It's gone on since 2014. And when the applicant first appeared before you, he did in fact present a plan, but he also expressed the intent to pursue a conservation subdivision. And very early on in the process, the applicant was directed that the, the board was going to ignore the plan and seek to have them provide the environmental analysis that's required under the conservation subdivision section of your ordinance. Now, there's no question, there's been an evolution of the plan, but the, but the board made some understanding of the applicant early on, that there was a need to fully understand the environmental considerations of that project before a serious review of the layout would be considered.
So we're having, there are three time periods one talks in, the past, the present, and the future. We're spending a lot of time talking about some future state of some other projects that may or may not come before this board, which is interesting but very academic and not what it's germane. We're having a history lesson, we're talking about the past, and that's fascinating, too. But I'm not, I don't live in the past, I live in the present. So can we please discuss, and I'd love to get to, what is the matter at hand for this board to vote on or decide on, and when are we doing that? And I asked that question within one piece, which is, I would love counsel to remind us specifically, in as much detail as possible, the criteria by which we make a judgment call on a positive or a negative declaration. And I don't mean to call that question in order, that is for you, Mr. Chair, to decide, but I, I, I feel like a conversation that continues to talk about some future plan or some past history is frankly not a good use of anyone's time at this very moment, at least. Now, we may find it's not tonight's decision, but I would like to know when we are going to do that.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I read this, Joel's letter over a couple, several times, and, and comments from Ron and Steve and so forth, and this, the whole business about procedural plan. And I think, Joel, your take on this action surrounding the procedural plan, the procedural plan, the conservation analysis and findings and the sketch plan, differs with our advisors in the timing and so forth of it. And as is usually the case, I think, you know, there's many opinions as there are people in the room. And I just think that we've, we've worked this whole process for three years at, sort of at the chair of the people who have been advising us along the whole way. So I, I find it, there's a couple specifics here that have been discussed over and over again, but I think the procedures this board has followed, procedures clearly at the input of our advisors. So I, I think that the charge about the procedural problems, I think, is misplaced. But to take Mr. Zuckerman's question, I wanted to ask our advisors, should we schedule a public hearing on this? And after that, then we'll make a determination.
Right, I indicated earlier that that would typically be your process before making a SECRE declaration. So you might want to consider scheduling a public hearing for this project for January.
Anybody, any comments on that? Neither.
I was just a little concerned about the letter that we received from the Conservation Board. And I don't want to spend the whole night talking about this, but how do we go about, working with the Conservation Board about these very specific things which have come up time and again? Fragmentation, compaction, sequencing, the amount of time it's going to take to, to do the project? These are, these are serious questions that need to be addressed before we can have a public hearing, right? I mean, how, do we talk with the people at the Conservation Board, or are we really supposed to not talk to them?
And the Conservation Board comments were presented to the board, they obviously were presented to the applicant as well. The latest modifications to the EAF that you have before you includes responses from the applicant and, and, in response to that specific letter. The letters in there, as well as their, their view of what mitigation they've offered to date. And it's really a matter for you to determine whether that is significant, that it, that it properly addresses those concerns, or whether you still have questions.
My feeling was that often, I said, I said, you know, you're right, you're wrong. And, you know, when we go to the different parts in here, they're the same, the same thing. But I didn't know, I guess my question really was, do we have any responsibility to get in touch with the Conservation Board and find some type of common ground? Or is that not something that's part of our purview?
Well, we take their advice. I mean, they comment on the issues before us in the minutes, and the information comes out of our meetings. I mean, and this is not the first response, we had several responses from the Conservation Board. So, I mean, like every, every other input, I think we take, take it into account, making our decisions.
In addition to the response letter that's right be, that's immediately behind the Conservation Board's letter, there are responses in the appropriate section throughout. The one that comes immediately to mind is their comment regarding the adequacy of the septic system. And I know that that, that's one I remember in particular. But some of the depth of their question, particularly the septic system, is, is well beyond, and the discussion is well beyond what would normally, in my experience, be done at this level. And they're talking about proving the septic systems. You really can't even go to the Health Department formally until you have a preliminary approval. But we did do the testing, and we did do all this stuff, and they were, so we have responded to those things. And, you know, the public hearing is the time to receive comments, and we'll receive them, and we'll respond to them.
I mean, because at the end of this letter that we got from the Conservation Board, they do recommend a full SECRE and also an environmental impact statement.
Well, I will tell you very frankly, and, and it's, it's sort of a biblical twist on this whole process. Some of it is taking their plowshares and beating it into a sword.
Mr. Chair, just to point to Peter's question or statement. My interpretation, I want, and again, I posed a question of counsel, I'd love the answer to that. It seems we're at a moment where the determination of significance is being called for, and a fellow-appointed entity by this town has given us their opinion of what their view on the determination of significance is. I will not even mention HHLT, because I think that is becoming a charged topic, but they are a, the only cited group, I understand, outside of a town entity in our town code. They're actually cited in our code as being an example of someone who could hold a easement and on various other pieces. So, Peter, my interpretation of this letter is that, at the point where we have the amount of data that's been collected, which is voluminous and extraordinarily well researched, one of our fellow groups that are appointed, just like we are at this board, have a viewpoint as to the answer of that significance. That's, that's my understanding of that letter. So counsel, could you please tell us again what the criteria is for a positive or a negative declaration? I would appreciate that, at least I would. I don't know if other board members would appreciate hearing that.
A lead agency's obligation under SECRE is to identify potential significant adverse environmental impacts that a project presents, to take a hard look at those potential impacts, to make sure that they've been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable, not possible, just practicable. And then to provide a reasoned elaboration for its determination as to whether they have or they have not been. If you have before you sufficient information from a full EAF, which is what we're looking at, your environmental assessment form, then you can make the determination, if, if the facts support it, that, and, and, you know, not everything is a potential significant adverse environmental impact, that might have environmental impacts that are not significant. Or perhaps they're so far-fetched that they're not really potential. You can make a determination that they have been, either they won't occur at all, or they've been mitigated to the full extent practicable, then you issue a negative declaration, meaning that there won't be any significant adverse environmental impacts from it. If, once you go through the information provided by the EAF, as supplemented in this case by a Part Three, which provides you studies and things, which, by the way, is pretty much what you would get if you didn't environmental impact statement in EIS. And you determine that, you know, there's this, there's this particular potential impact, and it's just not clear from what they've put in that it's been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable, then you would issue a positive declaration. You can have as little as one, actually, I've never seen an EIS for just one. But if you have two or three, then you really start thinking about having an environmental impact statement prepared, which is quite a lengthy, expensive, and detailed process. It's, it's not something to be undertaken lightly. There's a lot of confusion about SECRE review, and people, I think Peter just said now, you should have a full SECRE. There's no such thing as a full SECRE. It's, it's a matter of how far you're going to go in the process as far as identifying those potential adverse significant environmental impacts. So if you can, you know, look at this, this, all this information and say, there, the, I don't know, I'll make something up out of thin air here, potential impacts to water presented by having the equestrian facility, I don't think that they're significantly, they've been sufficiently mitigated, those impacts. Well, that's one more thing that you might say, gee, we really need that further in-depth environmental analysis. But if you look at this and you say, well, gee, they're not going to put the horse trails in the open space, and, you know, they have these various plans which are going to, going to ally those concerns, then I think you're in a position to adopt a negative declaration.
Can you clarify the two terms used, which seem very important? Practicable and possible?
Well, possible isn't a term in SECRE as far as that goes.
You said, but you said in contrast.
People think that it has to be mitigated to the maximum extent possible. It's been hundreds of thousands of dollars to erect fences or put in plantings or whatever it is, and that's not what SECRE requires. SECRE, the term practicable is used in SECRE, is, I have to admit, a little bit amorphous. But I think the idea is that you weigh the cost and the burden that you're putting on the applicant against the damage, the environmental, potential environmental harm that you're trying to avoid. And if you get to a point where it's going to be just expensive and it'll, it'll take away from what they're trying to do, you say, well, that's really not practicable for them. It's not a reasonable thing to ask them to do. But if you take a look and you say, gee, that's a really significant potential adverse impact they're going to have, I don't know, again, I'll make something out of thin air, they're going to have all sorts of lights on their property. And we are, we're kind of a dark sky town, we're going to ask them to put, you know, those down-facing shades, the hoods on the lights. That's, that's practical, there's no reason they can't do that. So you've got to kind of take it case by case, and it's, it's kind of a balancing test there. By the way, and I'll send a memo to you on this, define what makes a particular impact significant. And you look at a number of factors, like the number of people who might be affected, and the seriousness of the environmental harm that we're talking about, and it helps you weigh whether a particular potential adverse impact is truly significant or not. But I can get you the SECRE regulations on that, and it'll kind of help you, I think.
Well, if it's an important term, we kind of, if significant adverse impact, those two adjectives, the impact or needed to, to be able to make a decision, I'd probably like to see what significant means then.
If I can, it's Steve Gross from Hudson Highlands Environmental Consulting. Peter, I just want to respond to some of the things that you raised. I want to echo what Glenn already said, but if you go through our revised EAF, we had their letter before we submitted it, and we took great pains to address the concerns that they raised in our revisions. Glenn brought up one instance, another instance I can think of is where fragmentation was brought up, especially as it regarded interior bird species, and I addressed that specifically, including the species that they, they brought up. But if you go through their letter and go to the, the particular areas that they refer to, you should find responses in our revised EAF. I'll also point out that when they wrote the letter, they didn't have our revised EAF. We added in a tremendous amount of material since then, and you might want to go back to the Conservation Board and ask them if we've satisfied the concerns that they raised in that letter.
We did deliver copies of the revised EAF to, to members of the Conservation Board. And just to take another stab at history, shortly into the process, you said, we can't go any further, you, we have to stop until you do the conservation analysis before we go any further. That was very clear in my mind. I will tell you, Andy Schmar is the guy that pointed it out to you. And, and at that point, you said, hold your horses, do the environmental, and do the conservation analysis. And virtually, everything stopped. But, of course, we're always, we're always looking at designers, and yet we are- always looking at designers, and yet we are advocates in a certain degree. But we did, we did, we did do that. You did do that. You did halt the proceedings until we got through that.
Anything else?
So I guess my question is, once we make this secret determination, what of this are we, we're accepting this, right? Does that, we're accepting this package, right?
Yes.
Yes. And does that, is there further revision to the site plan? Or, you know, like if, let's say, you know, I don't know, like, they wanted to put another barn in, or, you know, like something, what kinds of things can change between this determination and when we give final approval?
Well, the answer is, if there was a significant change to the plan, such that it impacted the SECRE determination you previously made, you could vote to reopen SECRE, rescind the negative declaration, and either require more study, or possibly even, if it was warranted, issue a positive declaration in place of it.
I'm not asking questions correctly tonight. So let's, because that wasn't really what I was, I'm sorry.
What this does is try to address environmental concerns that are, you know, possible from the project. There's still some significant detail that has to be fleshed out in the plan. You know, they are proposing alternate road standards that have to be considered, that may or may not happen. There's stormwater management considerations that are, could be very significant. But you want to be assured at this point, and there's been some assurances offered by the applicant, that that stormwater management is going to occur within areas of the project that were intended to be disturbed, so there's no new impacts that result when that hard design comes in. So there's details that have to be fleshed out in these designs. But we're only at the point of trying to understand environmental impact.
So we've pitched around a number of numbers of houses, for example. Could that number change? Because we don't have a firm number at the moment, do we? I mean, we have drawings...
We've got differing numbers between what the board has, believes it to be, and the applicant. Once the plans get more finalized, that number will be revisited. The formula that's presented in the code under the conservation regs will be reviewed one more time. And he still has to satisfy that requirement. So the number could change. It's not going to go up.
It sort of becomes a cookbook for you, in a sense. I mean, for instance, the typical one is, you know, we don't give a lot of discussion about the Health Department approval, because it's a process that we have to go through. So you look in the book and you say, oh, they've got to get, they've said they're going to have Health Department approval. So you would do this anyway. But, so, did they do it? No, they didn't do it. Well, no, it's not getting approved. We've made representations to you that there will be a homeowners association with the bylaws that will help control and promulgate the protection of the open space. And you are going to see that, and you're going to be, and that's going to be at an acceptable level to your board. So, and you can basically go down the items in there and say, well, you said you'd do this. Why didn't you do it? Maybe I'll have a good explanation. Maybe it's impossible. But the idea is that we'll do all of those things, and you'll have a very fat checklist.
Another issue, another issue that was, another issue, large concern was the horse paddock and number of horses, and the trails and so forth. I mean, that's been back and forth as well. So, there's, I think there's really two or three issues that really have been, I won't say bones of contention, but a discussion back and forth. And density's one, the pond around, location around the pond, and the horses, and their product, as well as their use. But, does anyone have anything else? Should we take a motion to schedule a public hearing for January? Anyone?
I'll second it, but I want to...
You want first?
Oh, I'll move that motion. That's fine.
Second.
So can we have a discussion then quickly? So before we vote on...
Wait for a second, then we'll discuss.
Right.
Okay, discussion.
So, what's, I just want, again, back to my earlier question. What is the procedure, then? If we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to open that, we're going to entertain comments based upon Sections 1, 2, 3, and attachments. Are we going to make that available to the public, so they can be informed about what's being discussed? And then thirdly, once that gets done, that public hearing, once we close it, are we taking a, are we going to make a vote on determination of significance from that session? Or are we going to then go back and edit further the Part Three based upon the public's comments? What's the, I just want to understand the process by which we're going to go through?
Well, in theory, assuming that, you know, there is nothing that requires further SECRE review that comes out at the public hearing. You'll close the public hearing, you adopt a determination one way or the other under SECRE, and then you move forward from there. Now, if you go through the public hearing and something comes up that you hadn't thought about, that, oh my gosh, that's something that they really need to look at in, you know, another report or study in their Part Three, then you would hold off on action till you got further information on SECRE, and then you would act on it. So it's going to depend on what comes out at the public hearing. But in theory, close the public hearing, you adopt your SECRE determination, and assuming it's a negative declaration, then you would go on, if not that night, then the next, to consider finalizing the plans for this.
Okay, take a vote on, schedule a public hearing for the January meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Me too. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Given the considerable amount of content that's tied to this matter, in our public announcement of the public hearing, are we, can we make a offering or reference to availability, at least online, of these materials for the public to review?
I don't think that they are, I don't think that they're digitized in that way.
I don't think what?
They're digitized, all of them. But, but the...
Well, they obviously have to be digitized at some point to print them.
No, but I mean, in a package that we have. But I just, can I...
Hudson Highlands Land Trust?
Can everyone be, folks, guests, please, we're conducting business still.
We delivered a copy to Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and we delivered an extra copy for the public to come in and view. If there is need for a particular thing, I don't, it'd be very difficult to put the entire thing online.
I wouldn't suggest, I'm telling you, Parts One, Rod, just hold on a sec. So, Parts One, Two, and Three are clearly manageable. I mean, we're talking a PDF of 150, 200 pages.
We can do that for you.
I think, I think it'd be reasonable to offer having Parts One, Two, and Three put on either a website or a link to someplace to download as a PDF. I think that's a reasonable...
Additionally, the planning, the building department now has its own building with a very nice office. So it would be possible to also have physical documents available there for people to come and look at. Yeah, no, I mean, but like, yeah.
I think there's, I would like to make a reference to maybe both the physical availability as well as the digital downloadable ability, given that that's the way 99% of the world now operates. So if that's, if that's something, if you could send Tara a way to...
None of the, I don't want to send the attachments.
I think, I think if they could, if the public had time to read this before they come to the hearing, that would be a yeoman's task.
And I'll put the last page, I'll put a page on the end of it that says...
Beady and Watson, here's your phone number.
No, I don't need that.
You don't need more, you don't need more business, Glenn?
I don't need more phone calls all the time. But I'll put the last page that says that these doc, that the attachments are available at Town Hall. Well, that's already there. I can put that in.
Yeah, just include that.
Sure. We'll do.
The only thing we don't have there is a place to put it on the web, so Tara and I can work on that. Because, because they, yeah, because the town, it can't go on the town website, because there, but we could, we can make a place for it.
If I may, one other suggestion. I don't know whether you'd do this, but you should have a copy in your library.
I don't know where our library is. Oh, those kind of libraries.
Yeah, your library, your public library.
Oh, I mean, the public library.
I'm sorry.
I was thinking, you have the planning board library, the town library, the planning board library. That's what I thought you were talking about.
Your public library. Sorry.
I'm fine if it sits on Glenn's server, if he wants to have it on his website. You have a, you have a website, I assume, Glenn?
Well, we use the same IT guy as the town, so we'll figure out a way. I haven't figured out a way.
Just send it to us, and I can help Tara. We'll put, we'll make a place for it.
Well, here's another suggestion, very simple, last point. Maybe if Tara could say, upon request, the planning board's clerk can email it to them, and you can send them the PDF. That's fine, too, if anyone asks for it.
Come to the rescue of the planning board secretary. She's also the secretary of the zoning board in the Conservation Board.
Oh, that's how we can get Peter connected with the Conservation Board. Tara's the linchpin.
I know we want to facilitate public's knowledge, but give her a break. Whatever it takes to get, make it available.
If for some reason I can't get it onto the website, because like I said, I don't control the website, Tina does, I can, I control the municipal channel as well. I can advertise that we have it at the Town Hall.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ron, Steve, Graham, anything?
I have a question about the public hearing. Do we have guidelines for the comments? Are we restricting the comments to the environmental impact question? Or is this a open hearing on how you feel about the project in general?
This is a public hearing on the project, so you really can't restrict the, you can institute rules to limit time, have a sign-up sheet, anything procedurally that you want. This is a public hearing on the application.
All, everything's up for discussion. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear that up. And is there any provision for having written statements, preventing people from having prepared written statements, which can get lengthy?
The board usually accepts written statements, so on...
Well, not accepting them, but having them read aloud.
Oh, well, that's a procedural thing. You could make a, make a decision on that. See how many people are here.
All the hearings get really...
Oh, I hear you loud and clear, as far as that goes. But, I mean, it's, the board can determine procedurally how they want to handle that.
Maybe that's something we ought to think about. I certainly don't have any problem with anybody submitting any written statement that we can all read. But I'm not convinced that the public hearing is the format.
I know, a couple times I asked them to summarize it, and they summarize it by reading the whole thing. So it's not much of a summary.
Well, I always feel like, you know, it's good to let people, you know, be, feel like they're heard, you know? And often, people are really nervous about public speaking and uncertain about what they're saying. And so I think that's sometimes why they do that.
Steve, I'm just going to question if what you said was true. I thought the purpose of the public hearing was all related to the determination of significance, because there will be another public hearing on the site plan. You know, that's for later on.
I was under the impression this was the public hearing on the application. You tell me there's going to be another public hearing?
No.
And that was the reason for my question to Ron, because my understanding, the purpose of this hearing is, is a secret hearing regarding the determination of significance. That's what I thought. Steve, maybe I'm, you have a different impression.
There's no reason to hold a public hearing just on SECRE. I've never heard of such, unless you have an EIS. This would be...
Steve, that's why I asked the question. That's why, it is a rather extraordinary process. No, typically, you don't have a public hearing on a determination of significance. But Ron said that the process here, you've done this in the past. And so I'm not, I don't want to...
My only point was for any subdivision project that a public hearing is held and closed prior to a determination of significance being offered. That's all. It's not related to the environmental review. It's related to the project itself, which code requires that a public hearing be held.
All right. So the public hearing notice that you will be preparing will be...
For the project.
For the project.
Procedurally, isn't a site plan public hearing only held after determination of significance? Isn't that what's in the code?
No, it's in the code, you know.
No. This case law, this case law...
We've been over this.
That's fine. That's fine. We understand what you're doing. Mr. Zuckerman, I think that goes to your question. And we now have a clarification, because my, I was laboring under the misimpression that the hearing was solely with regard to the determination of significance.
In my opinion, which may not matter, the input I'm looking for, to make it, have my opinion from this one seat of the significance, is I'd like to hear the public's view as well. Whether we use that public hearing to affect the entire project or just the EIS, the matter in front of us is the determination of significance. So however we take the data from the public, I know what I have to do next, which is make that decision on my own.
We've had public hearings with public in attendance giving their opinions on smaller issues.
Exactly.
Why would it be any different at this stage?
That's the chair's thoughtful point here, which is he's trying to say, we got a big issue here. This is the first time we're doing something this large. We have a very big decision to make. He'd like to have the public's temperature on it. I think that's why he's saying, do it now.
I think it's just a smaller public hearing is writ large. So, anyway, we have a motion on the floor. We got a second. We did. All right.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We did take a vote, huh? I don't remember that. Boy, that must have been another planet. Motion to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, shut up.